Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the council's city council meeting, February 3rd, 2020. At this time, without the kind of a word for it. Holy God, we thank you for meeting with us today where we believe that passage would lead guided direct us to make the best decisions for the city. We ask that you would be with our police, our fire, our EMTs, and our servicemen, both here and over cities. We ask that you use this name. Thank you. Thank you. I pray that we lose to define the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I get a motion for adjourned approval? We need to move the forehand to take off the street signs because the guys didn't have sign on there until today. It's not the time to get enough time to place them on. So I don't think it'll hit the thousand dollar mark anyway. I just wanted to kind of have everybody on the same page. Can I get a motion for me to take off the street signs?
I'm not sure if we need to take off the street signs.
Give me a second.
That's like a bit.
Yeah. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for January 6th, 2020?
I'm making a motion to say, the committee says January 6th.
I'll second.
All in favor? Yes, thank you. Okay. Department reports. Lieutenant Simmons, Lieutenant Wilson, overview of the month, please.
I don't know where you last been. We had a good month last month, a couple of traffic stops, missed speed on Cypress Cove, New Orleans May, some suspicious people that mostly were gone by the time we got there. One, Higgins asked us to pick it up. It was somebody not at City Hall but near City Hall, but we were closer, so, but they were a couple of them that went out here. And then there was some suspicious activity reported in a house on Dogwood Pass. Lights kept going, the security lights kept going on and off, and she couldn't figure out why. I think we finally figured it out. It was a couple of animals set them off. Finally, about the third time we went out there, we found the culprit, the rapids. But it's all good. Other than that, we said we had a good month of January.
Thank you. We appreciate your continued support.
Yes, ma'am.
Very much.
Next is the mayor's report, guys, of the town I want today. The town being sick, the whole house being sick, and also the Super Bowl, my daily job with the Super Bowl, finally it's over. It's kind of busy, so. Do you have any questions for the finance reports? I know Miranda's not here tonight because of our family stuff, so. How much unbalanced is that? Yeah, go ahead and read it if you will.
The general unbalanced, six hundred fifty-two thousand, twelve dollars and seventy-three cents. Special reserve fund three, one hundred three dollars, four hundred, one hundred three thousand dollars, four hundred twenty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents. Splot four, six hundred sixty-four thousand, two hundred forty-seven dollars and sixteen cents. Higgins' splot two, four hundred fifty-one thousand, eight hundred forty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents. Higgins County splot two thousand eight, three hundred ninety-one dollars and sixty-eight cents. Splot five, two hundred forty thousand, six dollars and forty-five cents. Cash reserve fund, one hundred sixty-five thousand, four hundred and four dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Thank you. There's copies of that out in the lobby. Fire department quarter report. Fire marshal's son.
He just said the basics for each quarter. They break it down service-wise for the county and for the city. Total incidents inside the city were twenty-one. total from Cherokee County was seven thousand one hundred and two. Ambulance transports were eleven in the city and three thousand three hundred and thirty for the county. And they had a response time and stuff in there, too, because they didn't have fires, it didn't really apply to us.
Any questions?
Only on this splot, the, well, we got three hundred ninety-one dollars. What you did on our side and do away with that, if you want to count, to pick it up and make.
I don't know. I've kind of thought, because I didn't know if you could find it or anything. That's more of a Miranda question, because I don't know if you can combine them or if it's.
I'll take a note.
I think you can use it if, I don't know what the category was for that. If it included streets and roads, then you could spin it.
I'll make a note. All right, unfinished business number seven, discuss the replacement of street signs.
We did amend it. I completely amended the, we put a whole new thing together. Sorry about that.
Discussing whether moving the public appearance, ending the public appearance second reading.
This time of draft, the ordinance is in your packet. Should move that.
Yeah, it's the same one as last time. Just, do you want me to read it or?
You can operate it. Not out loud.
Can we get inside the side reading?
Sure.
Is there copies out there? Do you want me to move them?
Yeah, there's two of those council packets out there. It's the same exact name that we had last time. Looks like having a minute or two to communicate with them. We have to do it all again, right?
Yeah.
Michael Marshall, my colleague, second reading, moving in the public area. I'll stack it.
All in favor? Discuss speed bumps, so we have speed detection signals.
Okay, we've had numerous complaints about the speed bumps, but we've also had numerous people that have called very glad that they're there. I think it goes both directions. One guy actually called and was very excited they were there, but he said we were a little excited with them. And if it's possible to maybe tone it down some, or he had suggested speed bumps, which we didn't initially look into, but they were around five times the amount as a speed bump. So if there was ever a permanent one to be put in place, that would be a better option, obviously, than a bump. But we may want to set time parameters around how long they're actually up there. Just some people call and they're really angry. I can say, we're going to try them for a month, we're going to try them for six weeks, and then pull start following them out, or they're there until they decide to take them out.
I've had some positive feedback on those as well, just folks calling. A lot of the folks want to go out and they're saying that they've seen it slow down there and it's really helped. So I'm sure there's people that don't like it. Because I actually sat there and watched people just go around because we only had speed bumps on one side. So we did go back in, you know, in the area to, and place a speed bump on both sides of the road to help with some of that.
We had, there was an offer to remove them for us at no charge and to remove them permanently, so we couldn't find them, putting that down. That was it.
Does the fact that they're overkill?
Yeah.
He's funny.
Didn't they say they were going to turn me out of church, Jean? He does.
Well, Jean, you have some down by your house. What are you seeing and seeing?
It's slowing down, isn't it? It's far enough, sorry, I ain't got no plans about it.
Anybody else here that's from Higgins County, or referred to the Higgins Street area? Mark, do you have a?
The only thing I was worried about was if an emergency vehicle needed to come to get to something, I didn't know if it would hinder their travel, and that was my concern.
Neighborhood is in Cherokee County.
It does slow down, especially the fire trucks and ambulances. If it's an emergency, I can go flying over the things and it doesn't, you know, whatever. But the fire trucks and so forth, if you have to slow down a little bit to get over them, and for them, mostly it's a weight issue, you know, the weight of the truck bouncing, they don't want to do that. And that's why anytime you get neighborhood and so forth that wants speed bumps, the fire department, you feel like, can we reconsider that? But other than that, that's a lot of issue.
That's good enough.
Do you think they help?
Yes, in the short term. They do. Eventually, people find other ways to get around them.
You've had some, you've had some folks sitting out of their traffic.
We have.
Sitting up there.
Yeah, and, yeah, it's slowing them now, especially up on Higgins Street. Once they realize, it's like, oh, I'm getting close to the stop sign, I gotta speed bump.
We also had on there for the solar powered, like, signs that just play that fast, you don't want to know, dude, said something about that last time. Ms. Olden's actually in here today and requesting something because apparently hate type rating flying by her house today, and she's quite upset. But not that this would necessarily slow them down, but it might be a reminder, but they're sensitive. They're between, you know, say, two thousand F ones of three, depending on, you know, what to do with them. And it just, basically just tells you how fast you're going. I'm blinking, I go over, like, a mile if you over, whatever it is. But that is an option if it's something that you want to consider.
Does the county have any that we could borrow to put out there?
It depends.
Here's a catch.
There's always a catch, everything. We, well, we, ours, we actually data capture, and they do a report, and they'll tell you. We typically put them up for a week at a time, and it will give you hour by hour over a seven-day period, what the average speed is, and then actual speeds for those hours. So it's good for us for a data capture, because we can, like, we're getting ready right now to petition for our, the state, for our new radar permit. And that was another thing I was going to discuss with you after the meeting, was getting this Cherokee side of the city streets included in our radar permits, so we can actually do some speed enforcement where it's applicable, roadwise. So yes, I would say that we probably could put our units on the, on Higgins' side, but Higgins County streets are among the Cherokee streets.
Cherokee signs.
Unfortunately, they're always in demand, you know, throughout the county, so it might be a three or four week period before we can actually put the signs out.
So would you like to maybe put a request in and get one up there just to see?
We could try that.
Do you want to take the bumps up first, except for maybe in just a couple of areas?
Right over here is a lot of problem, right down below the church, like, they've got the death, grandchild, shoot house, like, wild.
That was Ms. Olden's hand here. The catch, as I talked to Evan, and their model trucks go through there, and he said they had.
That I made the speed sign.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's the same, because she had asked for that, if it would crack that, and that's not a bill, no one did.
Put us on the list and see if we can get one up here by the church.
If you just give me, if you will email me a list of streets that you want, I will put in a request for a traffic unit.
Is it okay if it's on the Higgins side? Or is that?
I'll ask.
Well, if we just say Higgins side.
I haven't need to go to that way. So I can, I can make that argument, good. You know, if we put one on the Cherokee side and one on the Higgins side, that way you're getting an average from both.
Ask, and if not, I can give Donnie Ferguson as well.
I don't, I don't know if they have them the same as ours, but, because the ones that we have to do the data capture are pretty expensive.
I thought you used to have a.
We have one down.
Broken cop, broken cop sign.
That was, one of the ones we had, I think, was broken, because it was donated to Jasper recently. And I think, I think there was another one, I think I was referring, it might have ended, because that's like the police stuff that, like, we can't really play with, not being police officers.
It's not like no. So we're going to, we're just discussing today, we're not voting. Anybody else have anything on, on solar powered speed detection signs and the questions about that? I've got an action to email Officer Simmons, and I'll go ahead and reach out to Donnie Ferguson to see if he has it, and you can let me know if you can actually put one on. I'll request those sites.
Sure.
All right, the next is D, update on MSA with Cherokee and Higgins County.
So you've got the final version of the MSA with Cherokee coming, that the county attorney had approved, so whenever you wanted to consider that, but on any time you can, of course, that's just for Cherokee side. I last heard from the county attorney for Higgins a week ago when I asked what the status was. He said they were, he needed to circle back and talk about it again with the chairman, and was needing to check with the magistrate court as well, if that may be slowed down now.
I called Rob the day, and he said all he was waiting on was a finalized document. He had done talking to the chair people and everything, he's good to go, so if you can get him whatever he needs.
Well, I sent this to the county. I said this, same, I used this as the format to send to the county attorney, and I put in the Higgins information on it. So I don't know if he has any issues with it.
Did you send it to the attorney or to? Okay, so I'll call Rob, and if you done sent it to the attorney, he should have everything.
Must have been, yes.
But he said he had already talked to all the chair people, and they was fine with it, and they could get something worked out ASAP.
It may have been pending, again, checking with the court to make sure that.
The municipal, yeah. That may have been how it was, but.
Any questions about that?
I'm just trying to check it, and what are you doing?
All right, discuss a vote on how many movies in the park.
Okay, they are still offering the same rate you had last year. It's basically, if we do, kind of, three movies, they'll do them for three fifty each. If you do them individually, as they come up at four thirty-five, four fifty. And I know last year, if you went over the three, they honor the three fifty rate through the year.
How is our soda machine doing?
Pretty good, so, I just picked up new sodas for it today.
Is it enough to cover any of our fees?
And probably so. And we just deposited, Miranda told us which counts and stuff to put in, so we just deposited all the proceeds from movies in the park, all the museum proceeds, and then machine proceeds, and there's files in there with all the amounts that were put in. So it's making some money. I don't know offhand if it, I don't know if it would cover all of it, but I would say it would definitely offset some of it.
The other thing is, instead of trying to do it in June, July, and August, when it's so hot, what do we think about maybe doing it in the spring?
Yeah, you would say that in March, they're the type though. The last one, we didn't start until, I think the person was June last year, and it was smelly hot a few times.
Maybe April, May, and then do one in October. Or September, when it's, yeah, so.
Can you get a list of the movies and put on the website?
Yeah, well, I have them in there. It's pretty much anything. They have some blackout dates for, Disney has some dates, you can't show certain ones. I do have the printout, it was like forty pages, so.
Can you bring it up on the website, make people.
Yeah, it's swine, swine.com. And there weren't, as long as you do the packages, I know last year there weren't stipulations, like, we were able to get, like, brand new movies last year, as soon as they were released to rent, they would let you show them. Because I think Dr. Dolittle comes out in May or something. It was May twenty-third, and he released eight, and that one doesn't mean it, I just started seeing reviews for it.
Put some suggestions out there. We'll put it on our, we'll put on the page, we'll see what's on there. Can I get a motion to approve movies in the park for the three movies?
I'm making a motion to approve.
All in, man. Next up is update on repaving and restriking, and I've been talking about it.
Yeah, since the last meeting, we got estimate back to fix the sink pole here on Dogwood Pass. It came in at eight hundred forty dollars, if it's done in conjunction with another project. The repaving of Haversham Way came out to fourteen thousand nine hundred fifteen. We voted to approve up to fifteen thousand. So these have both technically been approved. We've sent emails out, so everybody knew that. And I touched base with him, and he actually emailed me back this morning to tell me that Dogwood was done, but it's not. So he's having the guys, so kind of, I had Ricky and him go move it. He said they're gravel and stuff there, but they, everything's marked, so. I know the utility companies were out there, but he's having the guy go back out and just double-check it. But today, whenever I was leaving, they were out restriking. So he had said that they were going to get that on there and let me know when, but they had already, the trucks were out there, I guess, taking them out to the other side. So I haven't gone out to look at it yet, but that was up till this afternoon. But he said as far as the actual paving goes, it'll be springish, till it's, it's having to do the weather and stuff setting up and curing correctly, I guess. So he'll let me know deadlines, whenever they actually get those. So that was pretty much update on that. There's a paper behind that that gives the price breakdowns, they sent it to us. But it's the same thing that they sent the first time, just with the addition of the Dogwood Pass and Haversham Way.
I'm happy with those calls with just striping out here on five, just.
Appreciate it from that, yeah.
What you did today?
I said, well, they were out there working on it. And I know last time, they did it, I don't even know if they had been out there till they sent the invoices that it was done. So they're pretty quick with it, I guess.
So when they come back and patch the road, they're going to restrip.
That's what he initially told me, because he said that they were going to do it, and then whatever areas they had the, because it was, it was bad for twenty-four, not equal to see, and weather and stuff, and I would almost stop to drive through there in the evenings.
Next up is new business, discussing voting, you have some sort of direction on that. I know, I know the names of it. Do they, does the council, council vote on that, or just does the appointment's made?
If you have a slate of, fits in our slot, you can just breathe the slate and vote on time.
Okay.
So that's.
Yeah, so I have, I have it every.
You don't have to do it one by one.
I don't have to do it one.
No, unless somebody wants to argue about one, then we go back to the problem.
So I'll read off what I have, and if anybody has any, then you can.
Yes, and I can say one of those separate on that or something.
The next, yeah, pull the documents out. Okay. Hit that one right there, your hands on. So Mayor Prosthem, that is our first one. It's sticking to one where you're looking at that one, just adhere it to it. Mayor Prosthem, James Point, City Attorney Jeff Restbridge, Municipal Judge Rick Jones, Solicitor, City Solicitor Jeff Restbridge, City Building Inspector William Fortner, Financial Manager Miranda McDowell, Clerk Kelsey Reel, and Check Signers Kelsey Jane Monchad. Anybody have an issue with those?
We want to add any more checks, aren't we, for?
We may just, I was thinking about that the other day, because if, there's times, like even when the cameras came up, because they had to have them switched around, so we didn't have to do a check, but there's times that, like, somebody can't get down here. And I try not to sign a check, and I'm one writing it out, but if anybody wants to be one, it can just be used as a backup, whatever, but that's on y'all. It would, it would make things a little easier.
Is there anybody here that has the time to come down and do that for the day?
I'm here, Nathan, thank you.
You can always leave the job and come down, sign a check, and go back to work.
Or.
Yeah, but normally we do, I try to do bills and paychecks the same time, so normally everything gets done in one, because we'll do it in this.
And it really does help to have, to have somebody sign other than the person who's writing the check, and of course, it's the auditor, so.
Yeah, you can add me to the list.
Well, that way you can kind of look through stuff and see how the process goes.
Does there anything we have to do with the bank for that?
Yeah, there's a process for it, but as long as it's voted on, then we can proceed.
Can I get an addition? Can I get a motion to approve these appointments, the early appointments that I wrote off?
Make a motion to approve the uniform.
Give me a second. All in favor? Do you have any? Thank you.
We need to make a motion to have nice of the check sign.
I was presuming.
We just did, yeah.
Yes, sir. All right. Can I get a motion to move to executive session, please?
Move to executive session.
All in. Can I get a motion to end our executive session?
I'm voting to end it.
All in. Thank you. Next up is public appearance. Anybody have any thing relevant to the meeting tonight? Could you state your name and your address?
My name is Stadia, I live on Higgins Street, I live around Higgins Street. I've lived here since two thousand two in Nelson, and I got here a little late today, and I've heard some discussion about speed bumps. And I was wondering where the evidence is that all the speeders in the city in Nelson are on Higgins Street, and there's one street going up the hill. The way the speed bumps are placed here, it really doesn't make sense to me, and I've discussed this with some other people that I know in the area, and, and they agree, that, you know, going up this hill, those speed bumps are so close together, and my car, I can't even get second gear before I go from one speed bump to the next speed bump. And I know that they are movable, but they haven't been moved. So I don't understand, and I don't see any evidence to say that all the speeders are concentrated in that one area on Higgins Street, including the one area right outside my window, where I hear the cars going over the speed bumps all day and all night. Like I said, I've lived here for a long time, and I do know that Higgins Street has notoriously been known for people to not necessarily just stop at the speed, the stop signs and continue on. But I would like to say that I don't believe that that number of speed bumps in that small area is what we need. And I was reading the comments that were called in by various citizens here from the, from the city, and I will agree that one morning, I stopped by here, we had a little discussion, because I drive a little Mini Cooper, and, you know, I can just barely get over the speed bumps. So the concentration of speed bumps makes no sense whatsoever. And so why? And with these comments, what, why do we have a city council when you do things like this that seem to be reactionary based on what? Not gathering evidence, but maybe one citizen saying, oh, there's too many people speeding through this town, we got to slow them down, and now we're going to put a pile of speed bumps in a short distance.
So the ones out here are because the, the streets full of kids at the top there. So coming out the street in one direction, it had issues. Coming down it in another one, you had directions, you had issues.
So again, so we're, so we're only put speed bumps because there are kids in the city?
No, because.
Because they're speeding.
Those kids play up and down in that area a lot, and that's a main threat, and there's a lot of speeding.
A lot of it was big trucks, too. The sanitation companies.
And they're in, within that one little section. I would say that there's probably speeding on Tensile Avenue, but there's no speed bumps there. There's probably speeding further, further down this hill, and there's another stop sign at the bottom of the hill, but there's not a speed bump there. It's like, they're all in that one.
They have to be so far from the railroad tracks, that's part of the reason we couldn't bring them down much further. And the two that are up here, Mr. Duckett, who had the five grandkids, and the lady across the street that had Herb, had specifically come in and requested, and we put one in, and it was, it's kind of like, it'd fly, two, it'd flow down, go over, and then fly down again. So that was the reason that there were two sets. And Benny Duck actually was in today and asked for one on Cherokee. Just.
That's the only one we got left.
I think so. We may want to take some of them up, just so there isn't such a compact area, yeah, concentration of them.
So maybe instead of putting a speed bump, because a particular one person says, hey, can I have a speed bump? Maybe do some evidence-based research, like the one you're talking about, to say, this is the problem, or this isn't the problem, instead of just, you know, throwing more speed bumps.
Can we do some of that? Lieutenant Simmons wrote several tickets up there before we put the speed bumps in.
And again, I can only enforce what I can enforce on the Cherokee side unofficially. I've clocked people before they put the speed bumps on the ridge, even though it's in Higgins. I use that to get up, or get up to Higgins Street. I've seen people coming down the hill at fifty-five and sixty.
That's too much when you have young kids.
In a twenty-five mile.
One out there, ride up, down on the bicycle.
I've raised three children in this, in this town, and I, and I do know that that is, has always been an issue.
True.
Which brings up, you know, one of the points that I read there on. Which brings up, you know, one of the points that, that I read there on the comments. If we are relying on Cherokee County to enforce our laws, Cherokee County to be our fire department, why don't we just not have a city that doesn't have services? And let the county take care of these things, that they're already taken care of.
You won't have, you get money for roads, having a city. All that'll dry up, stuff like that, you'll get the chrome.
Not only that, but the money that's, the fire service MSA that we have with Cherokee County, you're going to have that whether you have a city or not. And I think, what are we, we were looking at the other day, it's like, I think the city actually retains maybe thirty percent of the property taxes, the other city may, there's seventy percent. Like a check we wrote to Cherokee County last year was ninety-two thousand dollars for fire services. Whether we collect it, give it to them, or whether you are just a Cherokee County resident, you're still going to pay that fire tax. So we only collect, I mean, offhand, it's roughly twenty-seven thousand dollars from each side for property taxes. Most of our revenue does come from property taxes.
It, it just seems like this is just another reactionary thing that...
You don't, you don't have people to speed around, so I think, but, I mean, I do...
It's, it's just, it's just another, you know, just like when we had mandatory, you have to have a gun.
Even if we had a police officer in here, he couldn't be out patrolling. There has this, we have a chief, and he has to be in that office so many hours a day, so we still going to have to rely on Cherokee County and Pickens County to come in and help.
Exactly.
If you have drug, if you have domestic violence, you still have to rely on the county, you can't send our cop out to do that.
You can't send ours out to do that, they normally go out on the backup for them.
You still, you still have to have it. You need all, it's not a symptom, I mean, you, you still have...
So, so the, so what we get from having a city council and, and being a city, annexed city, is that we have road services?
Streets and parks, sanitation, parks, sanitation.
Sanitation, mine, mine is private, because it's the same service, not a service.
So you have the option, most cities actually require you to use their service, and we haven't actually required that of, yet. But the companies that come in, you have to pay regular forty feet of property in such city limits, which we are trying to limit some, because we have like ten, twelve companies running through here, which does kill roads.
When I did the research, they, you know, there was no added benefit to using the city service, so... So anyway, that, I'm really just trying to learn, because I've been to several of these meetings, and it seems like you talk about the same things, and there's not a lot of change. With the flooding, with the parks, with the, you know, different things that I've heard discussion, but then not a lot of change, and that's, and I have to say that.
Thank you, appreciate your time. Anybody else have anything? Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I was thinking that.
All the favor? Thank you.